Counsel, I entertain an adoption, a motion for adoption of the August 26th, Council meeting minutes and also the September 2nd closed session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Hang on a second, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing now asks the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. We have no old business. We'll move to new business. I'll ask the clerk to read in caption ordinance 015, please.
This is to conduct the first reading of the Nordics Men's Land Development Code to allow a special use of property located at 441 West Montgomery Street owned by ETA or AMU House Corporation as Kappa Delta Sorority. The property is currently zoned SF on one with a special use for seven residents and auto requests a special use for a sorority house housing resident of eight.
Thank you. Counsel, ma'am, that's a first reading and is assigned to planning and zoning. Next, I'd ask the clerk to read ordinance 016 in caption, please.
This is to conduct the first reading of the Nordics Men's Land Development Code to reduce the setbacks within the heavy industrial HI district. The ordinance amends Article 3, Section 3.6.2, Table 3.4 entitled Minimum Setbacks Principal Buildings. To read as follows: Front major artery, feet fifty, collector feet thirty, all over feet not applicable. Side yard twenty, rear yard zero, D, DXF when a bus residential, then the near setback shall be twenty feet, the rear setback, I'm sorry, shall be fifty feet. Currently, the front setbacks are major artery one hundred feet, collector one hundred feet, all others not applicable, side yard two hundred feet, and rear yard two hundred feet.
Thank you, counsel member. That is also a first reading and is assigned to planning and zoning. Next, I'd ask the clerk to read in caption ordinance 017, please.
To adopt an ordinance approved by the Board of Trustees of Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit Systems, GMA, revising participation documents for the GMA's health plan, the revision supports compliance with the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, ACA, and all participating employees must adopt the revised declaration document and participation agreement.
Thank you, counsel. That's a first reading. Do you have a pleasure on that?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we amend the rules and I vote on this ordinance tonight.
That's a motion to suspend the rules and vote.
I second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Hearing now asks the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Thank you. The rules are suspended on that and council entertain a motion on that ordinance.
Move. We approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing now asks the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. Next, I would ask the clerk to read Resolution 031 in caption, please.
A resolution to adopt a complete street split.
I'll entertain a motion, counsel.
Move. We approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing now asks the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
That passes. Thank you. Counsel, entertain a motion now to move it to executive session to discuss a real estate property acquisition.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing now asks the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
Aye.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. Ladies and gentlemen, if, ladies and gentlemen, if you allow us just a moment to move into executive session, we'll return shortly. Thank you. Shinholster.
Here.
Ms. Walden.
Here.
Dr. Lee.
Here.
Thank you. Do have a quorum present. There was no action taken in our executive session. Counsel members, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add an item for discussion that I was charged with at our work session last Tuesday to inquire to the Municipal Association in reference to a question that Mr. Reynolds had brought up about an alternate means of the Ethics Committee. And if you, it so be your pleasure, I would like to ask that you make a motion to amend the agenda to add that.
Motion to amend the agenda.
Mayor Bentley.
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be appropriate if I asked to table this until we can discuss it in a work session? Because we don't know what you're about to say in order to, to evoke.
It's your pleasure.
Okay. I would like to do that. I would like to, um...
I presume that, well, let me do this as a matter of point. There, there's no second to Mr. Reynolds.
I'll second it for the discussion.
Okay. And then, once we get on the table, you can table it. Okay? We have a, and this, this is just a motion now to amend the agenda. Okay? Any discussion? Hearing now asks clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster. Ms. Walden.
No.
Dr. Lee. Ms. Shinholster.
No.
Okay. I'll, I'll break that for the matter of having it amended as, as an affirmative. Now that it is amended, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to add that particular item.
So moved.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing now asks clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers.
Before I vote, wait a minute for...
You do have discussion.
You do have discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right. I want to go back to what Dr. Lee mentioned earlier, that is, taking this and the week's end of what session is that what you were asking? I also want to ask, is there a concern that we are being asked to vote on something this evening? Or that the amendment, the way I understand it is, I'm holding my finger on this button. The way I understand it is that the mayor is asking that the agenda be amended so that he can give the information that GMA gave him today, but not asking for a vote. That has not come up, that has not come up with, that we have to make a decision at this point in time. But I think it is also prudent upon us to have any and all alternatives as to what we decide to do in going forward, whether we decide to stay completely with the ordinance. But I would like to hear if there are other cities that have done this, what they have done, how they've encountered the situation, and at least have that information before I go forward in voting.
Yes, I, I'm just relating information. I wanted to do it this way to make it an official part of the agenda. I could have very well just made it as part of announcement, but I suspect that there would probably be some discussion from council, which is not usually part of an announcement, and I wanted to just put this as, as part of it. I was charged to, to do this and council agreed to have me ask them this question and relay this information back. And that's basically all I intend to do. It's up to you as to what you want to do from there on, including tabling. But we've got to get it on the table before you can table it. So now, the motion and a second is to add the item. And you called Mr. Chambers? You called, roll, started calling on?
When I got the motion, he made the second. I have to call.
Okay, call. Okay.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Aye? Aye?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster.
I can along with him.
Ms. Walden.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Okay, now, the item is officially on the agenda. Dr. Lee, since you made that comment, do you want to make a motion?
No, I won't.
Okay. No, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask you to do that. I mean, that's, that's why we have work sessions. So I wouldn't ask you to do that. Basically, all I was asked to do was contact the Municipal Association as to alternatives to the three-member Ethics Committee, which is part of our ordinance at present. Susan Moore is a legal, a legal advisor with the Municipal Association and has informed me that, basically, their language is a template. We can craft it any way we want to. And in fact, there are many different versions of ethics ordinances in the state. Some of them have three members, some of them have one member, some of them have outside resources or sources. So it's really, basically, what we want to do, what she suggested in our case, was that if we chose to do so, we could go back and amend our ordinance, keep the three-member committee, as is now, and add, under certain circumstances, a outside source. And there are some communities that, that use different outside sources. There are some that use sources that are not even a part of the community. Now, one thing she did want us to make sure of before we did anything was that we did nothing that would violate the charter. So that's something that we'll have to be quite careful with and make sure that there's no conflicts as far as that is concerned. So basically, if it's the, the pleasure of council, as far as from the GMA's viewpoint, there is no reason why you could not do that. It just depends on where you want to go from here. So that, that's the information that I got. And it, and it's purely my intent to not just tell you what I've been told. So it, it's up to you as to what you want to do.
Mayor, if I may offer up a suggestion?
Yes.
I think it would be a great thing for not just the city of Millichville, but for the community as a whole to be seen as a community of ethics. And I've been speaking with several members of the community in discussion about this matter over the last week. And I have a suggestion that we form a countywide, a community-wide Board of Ethics and include a nominee or representative from each of the governing bodies in the community, including the Board of Education, the City Council, the County Commissioners, the Development Authority, the Central State Hospital Local Redevelopment Authority, even the Chamber of Commerce, so that there is a standing and nonpartial, impartial board who is available to discuss any ethical complaints that may be brought before them.
I would state this, and I'll ask Mr. Jordan to reaffirm for me. We have an ordinance in place. If something is going to be done to take, to take place of that ordinance or superseded, it's going to have to be, you're going to have to take action on it before you can do anything like that suggestion, right?
Yes, that's, that's correct. I think you're going to be in a situation where these, these ethics complaints have been filed under that ordinance. As far as any amendments to the ordinance, I think you're going to have to get legal advice in that regard. Something like Mr. Reynolds has suggested is obviously one thing to, to look at. But you're going to have to have an ordinance drawn. You're going to also have to address the, the current ordinance. And in, in that vein, as you know, I delivered you guys a letter today stating that I believe that it's in the city's best interest to, for you to appoint a separate legal counsel to advise you. You know, there's been some discussion about legal counsel to advise relative to the Ethics Board itself. But obviously, since I am a target of that complaint, I do not want there to be any accusation that, that my advice to you on this matter is in any way shaded by the fact that I too am a target to the complaint. So what I'm going to suggest to you is that, and hopefully you will do this as quickly as possible, that with regards to matters of this Ethics Board and how you move forward, that you employ counsel of your choice to provide you with, with that advice. And I think that is, that is proper and, quite frankly, it will allow my office to continue to provide you with legal advice on the issues that, that we have before us relative to number of things that we are working on. I think it's very important that whoever you select for that position, that that individual understand that he or she will be required to attend work sessions. And as long as this issue of the Ethics Ordinance and who's going to comprise the board and who's going to pick the legal counsel for the board and all, as long as you have those issues coming before you at regular and special call meetings and work sessions, that individual will need to be in attendance at those meetings. So you've gotten that letter and I would recommend that you act on it as quickly as, as possible. And, and that's where you need to get your advice on how to move forward from where we are right now.
There, there was one question that was brought up during the discussion as it pertains to this particular ordinance that we have today. Should the complaints, because you just stated that they have been filed under this ordinance, should the complaints be withdrawn? Then the council could look at, if it so be their pleasure, of amending the current ordinance. And then, if those complaints were refiled under the new amended ordinance, then it could apply as far as that circumstance with having an alternate means as far as the three, three-person committee.
Right, I'm sorry. I think that you have to, it really depends on how you're going to amend or alter the existing ordinance. If you're going to some model like councilman Reynolds has suggested, that's really going to be a, an undertaking that probably will not be an amendment to the current ordinance. And, but I really, again, I really think that you need, all of you need, advice that, again, from separate counsel to lead the way for you. So that there's been a lot of misstatements, a lot of misinformation. And I think it's important that you get counsel that understands the current ethics ordinance and also can advise you relative to how you may amend it to address this situation or how you may look at what has been suggested. One thing I want to ask the mayor to do, and that is, I appreciate you talking to this individual, but I would like for her to respond back to you and copy all of us
Okay.
with not only, you know, what, what some other communities have done, but also who they chose as individuals that were separate from council if that was done. I, I had, had thoughts of a municipal court judge doing that, or possibly a state court judge. What, what examples are out there? And they can find that information a lot quicker than city staff can in trying to contact different city of ethics or, or whatever throughout the state.
I'd be, I'd be more than happy to.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I, if I remember correctly, I thought that what the charge was to you, because the complaint was the concern about this body selecting the board members, and that the charge to you, to you was to find out if there was a way that we could amend the ordinance so that, that, that a separate group of people or individuals would be the, would, would select the members of the Ethics Board. Am I correct in that or?
That's, that's what I just said. That's, that's just what I just said. It says it's up to you as to how you want to do that. What Ms. Moore was saying is you can amend it, and you can do it any way you want to. So I mean, if you want to, if you want to amend it to have a group other than this three group, you know, what, what I was asked to do is see if there were alternate, if there were alternate ways besides having a three-person committee and what other committees were doing.
I thought you were talking about members of the board, having a three-member Ethics Board. But I, I didn't hear anything about, because, because regardless, if you have a three-member, five-member, seven-member, community-wide Ethics Board, this group are going to be the ones who, who select the board. And I thought that that was the basis of the initial complaint.
No, no, it was, what, what I was asked to do is find if there were alternate means besides, and the only reason I'm using the three persons is because that's what we have now. Okay?
I'm not saying there are a number of numbers on the board, but the fact that, I, I thought that this group did not want us to be the ones to select the members on the board.
That's what the ordinance would do. The ordinance would actually spell out, and that's what Mr. Chambers has just said, that, and maybe it'd be easier for you to see it in writing, is that in the, if you amend the ordinance under certain circumstances, for example, if a majority of council is named in a complaint, then that complaint will be heard by whomever is in that amended ordinance. Should you choose a state court judge, should you choose a, the municipal court judge, or should you choose someone of, of your other, it has, she, she did recommend that, of course, it be named in the amended ordinance. But in that particular case, then it would automatically go to whomever is named in the ordinance. We wouldn't be picking them, in other words.
So that's what GMA, that's what you're saying, that GMA recommended that we could do that. Because on, on every, for every other branch of government, state government, federal government, the, at the state level, they're, they're appointed by the Senate Committees. And on, on the federal level, they're appointed by the speaker, the minority leader, and so forth. So they're appointed by the elected officials. And, and the, the different city of ethics that I've communicated with in the past week or so, they've all selected their Board of Ethics. So they followed the example of the federal government and of the state government. So now you're saying that GMA say we don't have to, we, we don't have to do that. We can allow somebody else to select that?
If you have a unique circumstance where the majority of the body that the complaint is coming back to, yes. And I asked her had this occurred before. I fully expected her to say that we had a unique situation. But she said, no, there is a precedent that that has happened before, and those communities actually had an alternate way of having someone here.
Well, I, I certainly would like to know those communities so we can reach out and talk to the council members there and find out how they did that before a decision is made here. Because at every other level and everyone else that I have spoken with, both state representatives and so forth, they, they did not see why we were even discussing that when, when at each level, they're, they're selected by the elected officials.
Well, I think you all know Susan Moore. You should not hesitate to give her a call. All she's doing is responding to questions and, and, and basically what ifs. And you can, you can give her a call. You know how accessible she is. She's very smart and does a great job for, for GMA.
And I, you know, my purpose was not to ask you to do anything other than give you the information and then leave it at your pleasure as to what you want to do. Now, I certainly have not had the time to call around anything, and I cannot tell you what the difference is between a municipal ordinance and a Senate Committee Ethical Hearing or that kind of thing. I can only tell you what Ms. Moore told me.
So what kind of timeframe are we on, on this, on this complaint right now?
Use your microphone, please, Mr. Mullins.
Yeah, what kind of timeframe are we on?
Well, I think it's, it's, it's clear. I, I addressed this before. Although there are time requirements in the Ethics Ordinance, there is a provision of that ordinance that says that the failure or inability to adhere to those times are not, are not fatal to any work of, of the Ethics Board or to any action taken by City Council in response to the findings of the Ethics. But we ran into the same thing the last time. The, quite frankly, as, as we reported to you previously, those timeframes are not very workable. And particularly when you're dealing with volunteers that have their own lives and work schedules. And, and that was the, that was the biggest thing, was being able to get them in a room together. When you have three, you need to have, you should have them all there. So that's, that's not an issue at this point.
So Mr. Mayor, will you have your name ready for next council meeting?
Yes.
Under the old system?
Yes.
When, uh, when you going to provide to us?
As soon as I contact them.
Okay. And I just didn't want, I didn't want the night of to meet.
No.
Yeah, I'll give some time, do some research, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. I have, I have been forthcoming with appointments a little better than I used to be. But, but, no, I don't, I don't mind doing that. I've only spoken with one. I did not speak with anybody else because we were, we were waiting for this information tonight. And obviously, if it had been your pleasure to, to amend, then it would be redundant for me to make an appointment.
Well, I understand, but we on the old system. Let's provide that where everybody files on, old system.
No, I understand.
Let's get it on the old system.
I understand, I understand. If that, if that, well, that's what I'm here. I'm looking, I'm, I need direction. So let me know what you want to do. Everybody, is that what you want? You want to consider these complaints under our current ordinance?
I would, I would object to that. I would prefer that there be language written to amend the ordinance to allow for an alternate selection of the members of the Ethics Committee.
I voiced a concern that, what, what I'd like to do, whether or not we amend it, I would like to have additional information in front of us before we move forward. I'm not suggesting that we don't go with what we have in place. I'm also not suggesting that we amend it. But I do not like making decisions on what I feel like are on the fly. This is, you know, while, while this situation may be somewhat precedented in that...
precedented in that there have been likened cases, I don't know. I'd, I'd just about bet that a city has not faced five, now six, members plus everybody sitting up here but one. I'll just leave it at that. And, and yet not have an Ethics Board in place to begin with. And it's almost like we're setting up this ordinance in the midst of being accused of it. So, you know, I just, I've got to have more information in front of me before I start, uh, go any further down this road.
You make a fine point, Steve. With now every member of council being the target of one Ethics Complaint or another, I think we would all have to recuse ourselves from the selection of a committee, and that would render the mechanism for selecting a committee, uh, committee, uh, almost unworkable.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not agreeing with you on that, Walter.
Not either. I'm not either.
I, I don't, I don't want you to take it as that, and, but, but I do, I think it is all our responsibility to have as much information as we can in going forward and trying to make as rational and educated of a decision as we possibly can. And that's, that's the bottom line, and that, you know, if you can get that information for us, I would be most pleased. And in writing, and also how they ended up choosing, you know, was it with a municipal court judge? Was it one person? Was it a three-man, uh, three-member team?
Well, it was, it was up to, it was up to the, um, the council to do that because it was...
I understand that, but somebody has set precedent somewhere, so somebody has, so somewhere there are examples, Mr. Mayor, when I'm asking.
She mentioned a municipal judge. What actually happens in a case like that if you have it in your ordinance that you have a, you have a three-member committee, um, to hear Ethics Complaints? And then, when you have a situation where a majority of the council has been named in the Ethics Complaint, it's written, written into their ordinance that it automatically goes before a particular individual, like a municipal court judge, but it's named in the ordinance?
And, and they name an entirely new Ethics Board? Is that what you're?
No, that one person here.
Well, that's, that's what I can't understand. I'm, I'm still thinking that we are in a most unique situation here. It, it would be one thing if we already, if we still had our standing Ethics Board, then we go forward.
Yeah.
There, there's no question whatsoever. We don't have a standing Ethics Board.
Well, that was my whole point. That's why I just said just a minute ago, the only way for us to do what, what we're talking about here would be for the complaints to be withdrawn under, under this ordinance.
No matter what happens with what has been, um, I don't like to use the word accused, whatever. In, in, in this Ethics Complaint, we still have to have an Ethics Board going forward with this ordinance, period. Bottom line, no matter how it gets there, no matter what.
With this one, that's correct.
You know, after they get through with all this, they'll probably say the heck with it, and we'll have to name a new one. But, you know, we'll try to, we'll try to get to that bridge when we get there. But, you know, at this, at this point, um, I, I just, I would ask each of you to, um, to entertain the thoughts of, of at least getting as much information as we can of what others have done, and, and then making a, a very informed decision from that point.
I, I, I hear what you're saying too, but at the same time, so what you're saying, that after you've been charged with something, then it's okay to change the law, because our ordinances are our laws, so...
No, ma'am, if that was okay, then I'd change it where we'd all be okay tomorrow, and we'd just go right on home.
I know, right, but I mean...
And I understand what you're saying, Denise, but I, I, I think if, if, you know, there, there there have been many times that we have come up with, uh, resolutions with ordinances or whatever that at some point in time, we realized that we didn't address a particular situation. And, um, this was certainly one that none of us had in mind when we came up with the, uh, with the ordinance or desire to be a City of Ethics. And I, I just, you know, evidently, there have been others that have, that have been trailblazers before us, and I'd like to hear from them. I would like to, um, just to find out exactly specifically what happened, not generalities.
Well, council, it sounds like, um, I need to do a little bit more work in, um, ma'am? I will, um, give Ms. Moore a call back and, uh, request that she, uh, send something to us in, uh, writing on this based on your, your questions and, uh, requests, and, uh, then we'll schedule a work session and discuss it, and then you can give me some guidance as to which way you want to go. That satisfactory? There's no further business. Come before council. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.